Called the meeting of the Ojai City Council. We'll call the meeting to the Ojai City Council.
Yes, sir.
To order. Will the clerk please call?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temblat.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wierich.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. A pledge of allegiance. Randy, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure will, Mayor. Ready? Again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes in the agenda that...
Mayor, I have a question about item G on the consent.
You want to pull it?
I have a question of item I.
Okay, we want to... Okay. Did you say J?
Uh, G. I have a question about G.
Okay, G and I. Okay, we're pulling G and I. Do you have a motion to...
Move to approve the consent.
Or not, just the regular agenda, I guess, is what I think.
Oh, is that what we're doing right?
Yeah, once we get there.
Okay. Move to approve.
Okay, the agenda is approved and we've pulled those two items for later discussion. We have a presentation. We'll try to make it short and painless. The city of Ojai, for those of you who read signs, has for many years designated... We are designated as a tree city and anytime I have visitors up here, that's the first thing they mention about how lovely they think the valley is and all the beautiful trees. And I think we all consider ourselves to be a tree city. But apparently there were some resolutions or things that expired. And, well, I think it might have probably been easier to just take the sign down. We didn't do that. We are adopting the resolution and one of the things that they like us to do is to do that and we chose to have a proclamation to remind everybody how important trees are to the community. The Arbor Day people are the ones who kind of administer this nationally. The one comment I'd like to make, just as a reminder to all of us, you know, that trees are lovely, but they need to be the right species in the right place and to be maintained after we plant them. And I want to thank everybody who may be supported Measure C because the city will have funds now to do a better job at keeping the trees pruned and the deadwood and the things that put us at risk during fire... Well, I was going to say fire season, but that's year-round now. So, that... No plan is perfect and I had people say to me, "Well, what's so important about trees?" Well, we all know things like, you know, that they remove carbon from the air through transpiration. They actually change the microclimates where it keeps things cooler, the shade. I mean, there are many good reasons for it, but during the drought, the issue was, "Well, yeah, but they also suck water out of the ground and, you know, the water basin's going down." So, like I said, there's no plan is perfect, but one of the things that we have discovered, we think we have discovered, is that, you know, there's kind of two levels of water in the ground. There's the deep water that we tap into for drinking water and there's something called perch water, which is closer to the surface, that support a lot of the vegetation and the trees. And apparently there are, in many cases, there's a separation on those. So, just because we have trees doesn't mean it's depleting the groundwater, although some of the trees do actually do that. So, we need to be conscious of trees are our friends, but we also need to be the friends of the trees and take care of them. So, with that, I have a proclamation and we have three representatives from our city tree committee, or I guess the valley tree committee.
Oh, hi Trees.
Yeah, from Ojai Trees, right. Do you consider it city or valley? I think it's broader than the city, right?
It's a nonprofit. Ojai Trees is a nonprofit. There is a tree committee that's separate from us, but we're Ojai Trees. We're representing Ojai Trees.
Okay, but is it Garrett's group or is that different?
Garrett's group, yeah. Founded by Tom Bostrich.
It sounds like a Monty Python script.
To be clear, you are in Ojai... You don't just plant trees within the city, do you? So, valley-wide.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I see.
That was the distinction we were... Ladies, thank you for coming down. We want to contribute to the idea of a whole council meeting. She used to join us, but we are proclaiming the Arbor Week for this year and we thank you for the...
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. We are now on consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the approval of the consent?
Okay, well, we moved to approve the consent except for item G and item I.
Second to that?
Second.
Okay, any objection to that? If not, so ordered. Okay. Who would like to speak on item G?
Mayor, I have a que... My question is that the... Firstly, I'm totally in support of doing this. My only question is that there's the talk of the restoration plan and a whole definition of project scope and I note that in Section 5, it says, "The city shall be subject to the terms and conditions as specified in the standard agreement, the grants, programs, guidelines, and any applicable guidelines published by the awarding agency." My slight concern, maybe it should be a larger than a slight concern, is where is the city's... The Section 5 of the resolution is Attachment A, page 2 of 3. Is the city prohibited by that language from having its input into the restoration plan that we might get from our own independent experts? And if so, I'd like to amend this so that we are able to have input from our experts that we might choose to consult with in terms of the specifics of the restoration plan.
Yeah. No, I think that's a reasonable... I think that's a reasonable concern, so I think we can... I agree with amending that.
Okay.
Okay, so is there any objection to that?
So, specifically, would that be a change to the standard agreement, the way this is written?
Right, right. Yeah, in other words, it was basically allowing... I'm going to depend upon the city attorney who put language in there to meet that intent, that we have the ability to put our independent consultant expertise into what the restoration plan is.
So, and I think it's... I just... I think it says that here, "The city hereby agrees to use the fund eligible uses in the manner presented in the application." So, who's submitting the application?
Yeah.
And I would think that we would have a plan attached to that application.
Right.
So, therefore, we have input on the front end. That's what I'm...
Yeah.
That's what I'm reading. And we did... So, as a reminder, so we submitted this because it was time-sensitive. We can revoke it if we want to, so it has been submitted with a plan on it, so we can present... We can provide that plan.
So, do you need to see the plan, Bill, or...
Well, my argument is, I don't really... It's not my area of expertise, but let's say that we... Someone came along with the city that had expertise that might want to provide input into sort of some real-time modifications as we learn more about what we're doing. I just don't think that we want to delegate everything to an outside agency. We might want to have some ability to influence the nature of that restoration plan.
I think we retain that ability because we're the... We are the city seeking approval of our plan. So, we sought approval of a plan and the grant application. When, if it comes back approved, we can modify it within the bounds of what the agency will fund. So, we would never be forced to do something we don't want to do.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we wouldn't...
Depending on what they'll fund, there might be pieces that we have to pay for ourselves.
I just want to make sure we wouldn't lose the money if we wanted to provide input. That's all.
And is there a deadline on this? When's this?
Yeah, the deadline's coming.
It's been passed due...
No, I want to do it.
Right, I don't want to slow that. That would be my concern.
I would say that I think the existing language is flexible enough to accommodate your goals.
Okay.
Because it allows us to control how we structure the... Both the application, which was already submitted, and if we want to add or modify it over time, the exact Google plans.
I just didn't want to make sure we weren't precluded after grant award from doing that. And we're not, is what you're saying.
No, that's my read. We're not precluded.
I'm good then.
Okay, good. Do you have a motion to approve that?
I'll ask this real quick though. I think that... I think part of it is that, you know, where it says, "Funds are to be used for allowable expenditures specifically identified in the standard agreement," and I'm not sure what we... I don't think we know exactly what's in the standard agreement.
Yeah.
So, just know what I say is, as long as the standard agreement says whatever...
Yeah, my understanding of the standard agreement is that it's the granting agency's standard agreement, which has a list of things they'll fund and we can select from anything within that list.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it doesn't preclude us from adjusting what we want to fund.
You understand the concern, you're addressing the concern.
It includes things that would be broader than the scope of what we'd actually want.
Okay, and so, the city attorney and the city manager both are aware of the concern?
Yep.
And assuming we get the grant, we don't have to accept the grant without maybe having the further conversation if we're not comfortable with it.
Of the modification.
And the exact scopes of work for the contract that would follow from the grant could be used to adjust it, is needed.
Right. This is about a 50-50 shot. We may not have the opportunity.
So, with that assurance, I'll move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any objection? So ordered. Okay, we... Is it I?
I, yeah.
Okay, Susa?
Just a couple of questions. At the very bottom where it says, "Additionally, city staff will install a sign prohibiting buses at the beginning of North Signal Street." When I first read that, I thought it was, you know, it sounds like you're prohibiting buses at the beginning of North Signal Street. So, that should say, "City staff will install a sign at the beginning of North Signal Street prohibiting buses."
Yeah, correct.
That's what you mean.
And that's what we intended.
Okay. And then, the bigger question is, I mean, do we need signs like that all over town? You know, did we ever address, you know, like what happens that buses idle, some of them, all day? Did we address that?
So, we had talked about it in the parking committee and talked about bringing back a recommendation, so the Public Works Director and I talked about it in this context as well. So, we'll bring back something more focused on... I think that was more focused on the downtown in particular.
Yeah.
So, we'll bring that back at a future meeting, but this item in particular was trying to be responsive to the Signal Street concern.
Yeah, well, that's wonderful. You did it so quickly. I know. They appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll bring back one to talk about. One of the ideas we had raised was, you know, having a designated parking zone in the lower living parking lot.
Okay, so we'll try to do that before there's another festival.
Yeah.
Ryan?
We discussed this at Air Pollution Control District today and they did say that one thing in other communities, because it wasn't exactly a bus, it kind of a trailhead, but they had situations where cars were idling, whether it was near school or other stuff. They were able to not only have rules in place, but then they were very vigilant in enforcing them and were, you know, would go out to the places, hand out tickets. And they were talking about how that has been an important part of also Air Pollution Control District's mandate to lower the pollution. So, I think we have some broad scope there and if we do run into a question about it, APCD might be a place to start.
Cool.
I'm really glad... May I chime in once more? I'm glad you brought that up because I was sitting in front of Rainbow Bridge and a big old SUV drove up and it idled. I kept wanting to stand up and I thought, "No, she's going to leave. She's going..." But it went on. Then I became curious how long... And it was still idling when I left. So, I mean, it is... It's rare, but it's disgusting when it happens. Not disgusting, but it's...
Not all that rare, particularly like with the buses, because of what they're doing. It's the air conditioner to get themselves cool.
Yes.
Maybe we should offer them an umbrella or something and ask them to sit under a tree.
Well, just to add on to this, so what are... Can you give us, maybe not tonight, but give us some information on what are our rights to stop all individuals from idling their vehicles in town? Is, you know, can you do that?
Yeah.
That's what Ryan was saying.
We'll bring back a report. The one we were starting to work on was focused on buses, so that's what we were looking at.
I just heard SUVs, which are not a bus.
Okay, so is that...
You know, or large vehicles or... And so, I just want to... We're going to open up this box. Where's it going to end?
Well, you know, one reason this is a problem is because people get... They start looking at their iPhone and then they lose track of time, it seems, you know?
Okay.
Just wondering.
So, staff will report back at some point, okay? Do I have a motion to approve I on the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Thank you.
Any objection? If not, okay, consent agenda is approved. We are now on number two... Oh, no, yeah, number two. Active transportation project status update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. I have a brief report on this and I actually... We'll bring an image up just to kind of show it in a moment here. But this item is a follow-up from the February 11th meeting in which we presented a... The 35% design of the active transportation project, which includes the lane reduction of Maricopa Highway and it included a couple of curb cuts and changes to the layout there. When we brought that back to council on February 11th, we noted that because one of the new curb cuts, which is right next to the football stadium on screen there, one of those curb cuts that was being proposed would necessitate a change to the high school's parking lot. The school district had indicated a preference to avoid the change if possible because it would trigger additional requirements from the state architect's office or could trigger additional requirements from the state architect's office. So, at that time, we brought what we called the alternate design. And so, that wouldn't affect the required changes to the parking lot. At that time, council directed staff to meet with the district and prepare a proposed design that does include the additional curb cut and even broader look at possible improvements that we could make. So, we did that on Friday and the agenda, we put an item on the agenda because we're moving very quickly with some deadlines, so we were trying to make sure we had an item if we needed to make any decisions at this point. We met last week with the district. The district and our staff discussed a revised design. It would include the curb cut, would include a left turn. Is there a pointer?
Can you make that full screen, James?
Yeah, yeah. Let me... There's a couple of key points here. Jeremy, can you make it full screen? So, we'll pull this up here, but let's see.
Maybe I'll just fool you.
And I've officially caused all kinds of problems.
Play good in the...
Down the rabbit hole.
Actually, I actually know which button it is, but you know.
Time's on our side.
Yeah, that's all we got.
All right, well, the...
There we go.
I've actually been there before, so. So, what we're referring to is the curb cut here that would require traffic to come in and would require some change to the parking lot. And then also a left turn here into the faculty parking lot, which would reduce the need for people to make U-turns further on and reduce some of the traffic backup. So, we worked through that design. Our consultant is preparing a design to return and the school district at that time committed to reach out to the state architect's office to determine if they could submit the design. And if you recall, their concern was that if they submitted a design and the state architect imposed some requirements that would be costly, they were afraid that they'd be locked into it. So, they've reached out to the state architect this week, who confirmed that they can submit the design and revoke it without any penalty if need be. So, with those steps out of the way, the next step at this point is we will continue... We'll have a meeting with the consultant next week to lock in the design. My expectation is we'll bring that design to the district, but then also to council the following week for a decision of whether we want to move forward with submitting that design.
Thank you.
And then, one last point that I'll mention is there likely will be... The school district noted that to submit the design to the architect's office, there's expected to be a $3,000 application fee. So, we'll be working with them, but just as a, you know, as a note, there may be some costs associated with this design.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question for this. It's just...
Randy?
I told you, I'll keep them short tonight. The... Is there any way that we can, I'm trying to do a joint session with them regarding this? Can we reach out to them and do a joint session versus someone going to there and presenting something at their board? If we can find a place that we can actually have that discussion so that the community can see their input and see our input, our concerns, their concerns?
Well, do we need that at this point? I mean, if we can come to an agreement, I think that James made some progress saying, you know, "We have an obligation and the school district has an obligation. Part of the problem is caused by the general community with traffic. Part of the problem is caused by the traffic that's coming to the school." And so, together, we should be able to come up with something that would make it safer for the students and safer for the community and keep the flow of traffic moving. That's, I mean, that's the goal. And if they can get an agreement, at least at the staff level, then we see whether or not maybe if there's controversy at that point where we're not in agreement, then maybe a joint session is in order.
Well, I'm just saying the joint session would make them make... Would have... Would make them make that decision publicly. And I just think that that's something that should be done sooner than later. Once... Let's say we all agree and then it goes to the state, what's our timeframe then? Three months, four months, six months, a year? We don't know.
Yeah, yeah. I think at one point they had said three to four weeks, but I'm not... I'm not 100% sure of that, so we can get clarity on that.
Could we maybe take an embarrassed point on this, maybe wait till we see what design the staffs agree on and then bring this up again for discussion about whether we go onto the joint session?
One of five.
Okay.
Are the... The only two options that, I mean, is the cutout near the football stadium, is that still an option on the table?
Yes, so that's an option that they're willing...
You don't have the plan yet.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they're willing to try to submit it to the state.
When is the part... Will you on the... Will you point to the employee... So, that's the staff parking lot over there to the right?
Yeah, yeah. So, it'd be a left turn here.
That's what they want.
That's what it is now? Well, that wasn't what it was when I went there, that's why I meant... Because it used to be out in front. When they said they wanted a left turn lane into there, I thought they meant into that parking lot.
No, they mean here.
When they created that parking lot, they should have thought that through.
When the... So, that... Who parks in the front now? Is it students?
My understanding is it's permit parking for students.
They don't have any students.
Don't be mean.
Okay, so, do we just as...
Oh, wow, I didn't know they built one.
Come on, guys. Do we need to give you any direction or is this... Just a minute, Susa, I'll come back to you.
So, the plan right now is we will have the consultant prepare the design. We will return with it. So, as long as that is acceptable, we're... We can move forward.
Okay, Susa?
Okay, are there any public comments, cards on this or...
Yes, Susa.
Well, I wanted to wait to make my comments after we hear from the public. I just wanted to make sure you weren't moving on.
I'm just trying to give a little order here, okay?
Well, I haven't even said anything.
Okay, I do have one card from the public. Has the council asked all of the questions of staff? Okay. Russell, where are you?
There he is.
There you are. Come on down.
Nice look tonight, Russell.
I know.
Welcome back to Ojai.
Did you go to the UK?
I did, yes.
Oh, don't go there again soon.
No, you're using Russell's time. Three minutes.
I also went to Amsterdam and Utrecht, so you guys are in real trouble. Obviously, my name is Russell Sidney. I'm working with the Ojai Bicycle Safety Team, which is supporting the Complete Streets Committee in safe routes to schools. We've reviewed the two options under discussion and we are very clear that the one safe place for traffic coming down from the five-points area to enter campus is immediately at the athletic field where it ends before the parking lot. If we can bring bicycles in there, bring them down next to the athletic field so they can access the campus housing, that that would be the safest way to get bicycles onto campus. If any changes are made that encourage vehicles to get closer to those bicycles and to use that street next to the field more often, that will directly endanger bicycles. The existing driveway is inadequate for the purposes of bringing traffic on campus and is one of the reasons why we have extensive backups in there because it's only wide enough to have two vehicles at any given time. Improving that should be relatively inexpensive and easy and we support that option. The other thing that you can see on this map is that the bicycle path has been moved away from the curb to allow right-turn traffic to enter the campus next to the curb. That puts bicycles between the right-turn traffic and the through-traffic on the highway. Protecting them in that position is very difficult to do and it's happening before the bicycles can turn into campus. So, students would not be protected in getting onto campus if we go with the design the way you see it here. The objective from our point of view is to get the bicyclists along next to the curb with a nice protected parking lane between them and traffic, get them onto campus so that they can get safely into the buildings before they have to interact with cars. This is pushing bicyclists away from the curb and they're going to have to then go out the other side of the right-turn traffic and have to cross it to get back into campus. I don't know how this is an improvement.
Because I want to make sure, because I don't think that was correct, Russell. So, I want to make sure. Right, Greg, you're back there shaking your head too? So, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, you're listening too. Russell, the cutout there, next to there will... Oh, we... There is no question it will be there for at least bicycles and students.
Okay.
But maybe also vehicles. Now, I believe in some... Because I can't see this for a while, but it should be that bicycles coming down, regardless of whether there's a separate car entry or not, will have a bike ingress, egress there before that lane goes to the left.
And if you see above where the hand is, you can see those hash marks and you can see the lines that move away from the curb.
But there'll be a spot if you're coming south on there for a bicycle to come into campus before having to be to the left of the cars turning.
What that indicates is a place where the bicycle lane is being pulled away from the curb.
Yes.
The hash marks are so that the right-turn traffic can cross that bicycle path.
You're right.
And make the turn into campus.
But if that's...
That's what that plan represents. I don't know if that's what anybody had in mind, but that's what we're looking at.
And to be clear, this isn't the design.
This isn't the design.
The design is being drafted as we speak.
We're doing another one to address these concerns.
We're talking about the concerns that we're addressing.
Can I make a...
And they're... Yeah.
I would like to make a clarification.
Susa, come on, come on, guys. Let's do one at a time, okay? Susa, you are not chairing the meeting, please. Russell, are you finished?
I feel like I have used too much of your time already.
No, you haven't. Thank you. We appreciate your comments, okay?
We'll take a mental note.
Susa, would you wait until I call on you? Then that will make it flow better. I'm not ignoring you, okay? Now, Russell, as she may... Susa may want to talk to you, so proceed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, what I want to say, Russell, is that at the Complete Streets meeting last Wednesday, we focused solely on the parking lot. That's all we talked about. And Dave Rogers was present and then we called in James and Greg Grant. Okay. And we came to agreement as to what was, in our educated opinion, the best design for both getting rid of that bottleneck that happens 15 minutes, 20 minutes in the morning and again when school is out and that keeps the kids away from the cars. So, perhaps Greg Grant will come and explain it to, you know, to clarify. You know, you were in Europe, so it's understandable that there may be some confusion, but I want to assure you...
Maybe I should leave town more often.
Russell, I stayed in America and I'm confused too, so don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, if this is not...
Yeah, it's confusing if this is...
This is seriously scary.
Yeah, yeah. But thank you because I agree with your concerns, but I feel like we did iron them out.
Oh, good, good. So, you're just doing this to get me excited?
Yeah.
Right. Welcome home. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Susa?
I'm going to wait until if Greg Grant, are you going to explain it something? Are you... Yeah, and I want to wait until all the speakers are done.
Good evening. Very briefly, I think this is, you can see the date on this, is February 2019. So, I think the intention was that James can see... This was back when we were working with a school on some layouts in the parking lot. So, I think the intention was just so James can describe the situation, where the entries are and so on. Yeah, that's not... The things that Russell brought up are not the existing design. It is the bike lane stays tight to the curb throughout that whole area.
All right, thank you.
So, okay.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, you have more?
Yes, I wanted to wait until they were done.
Well, who's done?
The speakers.
We had one card. It was Russell. He's finished.
Okay.
Well, he's... I think he's trying to say...
...the comment section that I was trying to address and that is whether the turn pocket was going to be pushed back next to the...
Okay, well, tonight, we're not designing it, Russell, and I would suggest get in touch with the city manager and the designer.
Get the latest design.
And I'm sure that they will take that into consideration.
We're still waiting for a design.
Yeah, it's being worked on.
Okay, next item. Item...
I didn't get to speak. I wanted to ask James some questions.
Please proceed.
My... When I spoke before, it was in response.
Just ask your questions.
I wanted to know, James, when you said school district, that was... Dave Rogers was present at the meeting, correct?
Yes.
And he was present at the Complete Streets, so then he would have conveyed, I believe, what we had intended. I just want assurance of that or, you know...
So, he was at the meeting. I'm not sure what... I'm not sure what he discussed at the Complete Streets meeting, so I'm not sure... He was at this meeting that I was at with the school district.
Okay, okay. And the other thing I wanted to say is that on Thursday, and it's related to this, it's related to this, on Thursday, uh, at eleven o'clock, what was supposed to be a one-hour meeting about the demonstration project ran almost three hours. It was the, probably the best meeting I've ever attended in both of my terms on the council, and there will be a, a, a public, uh, demonstration project meeting where they will explain all of this, answer questions that the public has, and they have experts, they've done this, this type of project in communities all over the world, I think several hundred projects like this, and, um, they, they are clear, the, the demo, you know, we discussed that the, the success of this demonstration project pretty much hinges on this parking lot and the bottleneck in the morning, okay? If we can demonstrate that we can improve both the traffic flow and the safety of the cyclists, then this project will be a success. Okay, so we have to get rid of that bottleneck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just one quick question.
Randy.
First of all, um, was this meeting open to all the council people that you attended?
As far as I know, I, I don't know.
Can Greg respond to that? Greg, were we all notified of this meeting that Sousa attended?
Uh, the meeting was laid out, it's the Technical Advisory Committee and the Community Advisory Committee, they had two committees. So the consultant under, uh, the SCAG, you know, remember SCAG is administering this grant, so they had a cross-section of the community for the initial meeting, was just to get a feel for issues and, uh, and take a look at the site, it's kind of a kickoff meeting.
You didn't answer the question.
So the next meeting is the one that's fully open to the whole public.
Were we notified as council people of this meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and is there any reason why we weren't?
No, but we talked about it, we talked about, this Technical Advisory Committee apparently was set up years ago, and so Greg and I talked, uh, when I, when we found out about this that we need to, uh, get more people involved and get council involved in these meetings moving forward. So this was the first one, it was set up based on the original project a couple of years back.
So, so again, my concern is that none of us were invited or were made aware of, um, and I don't know how, and if it's open to the public, why the public wasn't made aware of it. So I just would like-
I misspoke, I misspoke, I want to clarify.
So I would just like-
Would you please ask to be recognized? We're never gonna get out of here or get out of the next item, right?
I would just like, in the future-
Yes.
For these meetings, for us to be notified so that we might attend, the public be made aware of these meetings so they might attend, and then I'd like a status update on this committee. Who are they? Who's on it? How long has it been going on? Just, um, again, it sounds like a committee that we don't know we have a committee of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, understood.
And then we have Brown Act issues, if we start running the, the technical committee meetings as city council meetings. But we understand you, you would like to be notified on anything that has to do with this project.
Well, more importantly is why weren't we given that as a council preference versus this committee? We're the ones that are making these decisions, these committees are just advisory.
That's correct. And when, and when they send their reports to us, that's when we weigh in. We don't parallel them on everything that is, that happens. But I understand your concern, and I think the staff is now sensitized to it, okay?
May I?
No. Uh, we are going now to public comment, and I have four cards, uh, oh, two more? I got, what, six, okay.
I want to talk to you.
Dr. Neal, you're up first, and I've got, uh, Ron Solorsano, our librarian, on deck. Hi, Dre.
Hi. Can you all hear me?
Okay, guys, let's please, one meeting at a time.
So I, I don't normally read things, but I'm going to because this is an update from the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. We wanted to tell you how excited we are about the passing of Measure C. It shows the commitment of our community to projects that are part of the core values of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, fire mitigation and climate change mitigation. Chris Danch is sorry he can't be here today. He's representing us at the Protecting Your City From Wildfire Conference, where civic officials, fire responders, regulators, utilities, and more will be discussing wildfire resilient communities. We would like to update the city council on some of our progress. Since December, we have submitted two grants that include broad stakeholder support, over $400,000 in grant support, and $300,000 in in-kind support and donations. We are very thankful for the city's support in these efforts to help create fire and climate resiliency for the Ojai Valley. We hope, by submitting, we hope to be submitting a third grant on March 18th with the city's support. Measure C is an important key to helping leverage existing new funds for fire mitigation and climate change mitigation. We would like to remind the city of the importance of these projects like mental health preparedness for disasters, prescribed grazing, fire vegetation management, and assessment of new climate fire resiliency programs like our Community Disaster Evacuation Centers, or CDEX. We would like to remind the city of the Ojai Fire Safe Council's commitments to these efforts and capability to both manage and run these efforts for the city of Ojai and the Ojai Valley, both as a contractor and through the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council's initiative. And we really want to thank you for your time and your support for the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council and for our community in these efforts. Um, on a note, water has become quite a topic. So I have a small suggestion that from now on, water be named when it's dealing with fire, natural organic liquid fire retardant.
I like it. I like it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dre. Ron, you're up, and, uh, Ron number two, Ron McCray, you're next on deck.
All righty, thank you. Thank you for designating me Ron number one. Good evening, members of council, I'm Ron Solorsano, the Regional Librarian for the Ojai Valley. I just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the events we have coming up at the library, uh, in the month of March. And I want to start by, uh, saying we have California Lutheran University's Community Counseling Services coming by the library on Saturday, March 14th at 1:00 PM to lead a mindfulness workshop. Uh, they're going to be discussing a variety of tools such as meditation and grounding techniques, which will allow one to become fully present and take a nonjudgmental outlook on life. Uh, later on, uh, we have on March 18th, that's a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM, Vina Lestado is going to visit the library to present a lecture on tiny houses, design, and living. Uh, Vina has decades of experience designing spaces, and will be discussing strategies for utilizing tiny spaces in a way that is comfortable and even luxurious. Then we're gonna have Dr. Arthur Vander visit us on Saturday, March 21st at 1:00 PM to present a talk titled Intestinal Microbes and the Brain in Health and Disease, discussing research into the possibility that intestinal microbes can exert important influences on the brain and other organs. Later on, we have Ross Care, March 25th, giving a talk music and animation with Fred Jackson and Disney Films. Uh, Mr. Care is gonna talk about the development and use of original music, uh, composed for classic Disney films. We're talking 1928 through 1965 or so. And then Opera Santa Barbara is coming back to us at the library to present a free concert at noon on Thursday, March 26th. Um, all of this is in addition to us doing two more weeks of our Monday matinees. Those are 11:30 AM showings of movies from this past award season. Uh, coming up next Monday, the 16th, we're gonna have Once Upon a Time in Hollywood, and then our finale will be March 23rd, Joker. And that's, uh, it for now, in addition to all of our normal events, our storytimes, our ukulele club and all of that stuff. Any questions that you have, please just reach out to me at the library. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Impressive lineup, as usual.
Okay. And now the second, Ron, Ron, you're number one also.
Okay. Probably not.
Tim Kraut, you're on deck.
Let me, uh, pass this around for Greg. And I want you, and I'm gonna need two, I know you don't know what this is, but I'm gonna give you one, each of them. Just, I'm gonna talk about, uh, the pickleball problem again. Um, what I'd want you to do, I wanna make sure you know what a pickleball is, what it sounds like, and what it does, and why you put it in right next door here, I'm not sure. But if I could have just one minute of your time, that's all I need. Just look, listen, be quiet. It's about a minute. That was recorded on the other side of the demonstration garden in my backyard. That's where I hear this every day. It's now seven days a week, all day Sunday, this is what I hear. There's, there's, people live across the street in apartments and the condo are much closer than I am. You've heard of what they said. This, it's not so much that they laugh and cheer. This is what I hear every day inside my house, every, seven days a week. Well, I mean, I was, I went home last Saturday, and it's about, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon, I get in the hot tub, I'm trying to relax, I'm hearing this. And I was so pissed off, I got up out of there, I walked over there, and I just had to do something. I said, listen, you know, excuse me, but, you know, you guys are making a lot of noise over here, all these people around here really are upset about this stuff. And, you know, you, does it bother you? They said, you know, this is Saturday, this is, uh, four o'clock in the afternoon, and this is a park. I said, you know, but you're disturbing it, don't you, don't you care? They said, no, it's a park, for Christ's sake, it's a park. It's a fine, well, it's fine. So I left. I went home, I got in my Harley, I dropped around in the outside of the court, outside of the wall, and I wrapped it up a little bit. It was like a beehive, they just went crazy. What are you doing? Get out of here. You know, I mean, they're yelling at me and screaming at me. It's, and I said, you know, it's, it's a park, it's Saturday afternoon, I can make all the noise I want. And this guy, about 300 pounds, jumps over the fence and he's about ready to hit me. Said, you know, ah, fine, go ahead. I mean, we'll wind up in jail if you do that. But, you know, I, I said, you know, the, does this look like a park? This crosses the street, those condos sitting there, does that look like they're in a park? No, it, it, listen to this. I mean, I, I, you don't, don't probably understand it. It's not just the noise, it's, uh, it's all of this popping stuff that you cannot stop. You're never gonna stop it, it's all the time, and it's getting worse. They're on Saturday, all day Sunday now. And these poor people across the street live a lot closer than I. This is what I'm hearing, all the time. I mean, the problem isn't with these, the pickleball people, it's with you guys. You didn't, you didn't even know what you were putting in. I don't even think you knew what a, a pickleball was. You didn't know research whatsoever. People suing people all over the place because you put it in too close to the residents. I mean, it, it, there's no reason in the world that you should have it right here in this neighborhood. You've got Soul Park over there, I went down there, it's great, it's beautiful, just go play there. You can go back to Matilah Place. And if you're a little effort, you could probably get to Libby Park over there to take on some of it, or get some of the schools, after hours perhaps, that they can go over there and play. We want them to play, they're having fun. I know, you can say it over and over and go, we're having fun, it's great, we agree to that. No question whatsoever, it's great, but not here, for Christ's sake, you know, it's not here.
Thank you, Ron.
And you know, that, of course, that other one is a lawsuit. I mean, I'm, I'm sure you are aware of it, that we have a class action lawsuit, and we're not gonna stop until this noise stops.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, Tim Kraut. Tim, you're up, and Regina, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff.
Good evening.
Okay.
I can use some, my kids.
I just want to say tonight, um, thank you to all of you for all your time, your efforts, your energy, and of course, the city money that has gone into this. Uh, it's created a great recreational, additional recreational to this valley. Um, we're gaining people by the day. There are people playing now that, uh, are bringing their own equipment that I've never seen before, that are driving up, asking questions, and, um, have been very positive towards this. So, um, tonight I'd just like for you to, as you think about the decisions that you're gonna make regarding this usage of this park, and do your due diligence that you, take a look at the grant deed and see what that tells you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, okay, Regina, you're up, and Christine, you're on deck.
Hello, uh, Ojai City Council. Thank you for everything you're doing. I'm here more as an update, uh, quickly about the Ventura River Watershed Instream Flow and Water Resiliency Framework Grant. Uh, a press release is going out tomorrow. I just wanted to let you all know, um, to the public. And also, you all have been invited to a meeting this coming Thursday with our first, uh, watershed framework meeting. So I think we'll hopefully come up with a lot of that liquid, um, what did you call it, Andrea? Uh, liquid fire-
Organic fire retardant.
Organic, natural fire retardant that we can talk about. Anyway, so I just want to make sure you were aware of it, and-
And for the record, time and date.
Thank you. It's next Thursday from nine to 11:30 at Thatcher School, and you should all have an email.
Right, but for the public.
Is it open to the public?
Um, it is, it is not necessarily geared towards the public. We are, we do have many public meetings coming up in the next two years, um, so.
But since you're announcing it.
Yeah, definitely. All right, thank you.
Certain interested parties.
Thanks, Regina. Christine, you're up.
Hi there. I've come on behalf of the Arts Commission once again to make a very exciting announcement. So I'd like all of you, if you have one on you, to take out a cell phone and have it handy, please.
Really?
Brown Act doesn't last to do that.
We're gonna have to turn them in.
And, uh, if you would open up to your camera, and if you haven't already gone to settings and asked your camera to scan QR codes, it's very easy to do, and I'd ask you to do that as well. And while you're doing that, um, I have passed out, Gail has passed out to you, the yet to be distributed-
Yes.
-but printed Walking Tour of Downtown Ojai Public Art. This is going to be released to the public sometime around Saturday, April 4th, when all of you, do you have a calendar handy, everybody? Because I'm inviting each and every one of you to come to-
Yeah, how about the camera, are you? We're all kind of-
I will write it on paper.
We're not, we're-
It's hard, it's multi-talented.
You are being invited to the very first ever docent tour of the downtown public art. Now, a lot of people in Ojai, and maybe some of you don't know, there are over 45 pieces of public art within the city. There are so many pieces of public art that we actually had to divide this tour up into four different tours. And if you take your brochure, I wish the public could see this, if you take your brochure and you open it up like this, where it says how to use this guide, you'll see down below it says along the way, and you see that little box there? That's the QR code. If you point your camera at that, point your camera at that, everybody. Focus your camera right on that code. Is anybody doing it? Bill is doing it. Bill, tell us what happened.
Well, I'm just looking at a picture right now.
Well, it should open up at the top, it should say that it's the Arts Ojai-
I have an old phone.
...website. And it automatically will open up to this section of the tour, which will increase the time of the downtown tour. We work, the committee that I worked with, um, more than one are docents for the Ojai Valley Museum, and so we were very interested in learning from them. How long should a tour be? When do the people really get tired? And then, about an hour and a half is the limit. So that's why we did it this way. And then, if you open it further, you'll see two QR codes on this page as well, because there's an East City Tour and there's a West City Tour, totally different pieces of public art. And what's wonderful about these QR codes is that every time we have new public art, and we're gonna have two new public art pieces in the east onto the city very shortly, they can be added onto the website. So it's really kind of a cool thing. We can just continue to add and not have to reprint. So, um, the tour itself, the downtown tour, which is the inside pages for the public. This is the tour that you're being invited to, Saturday, April 4th. It's gonna be from nine to 11:00 AM, and you will learn things about these pieces, pieces of public art that are not printed here in this brochure. I have stories to tell you, some of it is not printable. But I will tell it to you. So you're invited, along with the artists and the people who worked on this. I really have to do a shout out to Colleen McDougall, who did the Matilah Poppy on the front, and also did the map, that's Colleen's work, the map inside, and to Carlos Gras- front, and also did the map, that's Colleen's work, the map inside, and to Carlos Grasso, the artist who did the layout, um, worked with me on the layout and putting this all together. So, we have a whole lot of these to disperse, but we're not dispersing them yet. One of the reasons for that is we have not completely set up our docent-led tours yet. So that's all gonna get released on Saturday, April 4th, the day that I know you've all written down...
Yes, we have.
...to show up at Club Vista Park at the West End at nine o'clock AM, and we're going to use the city's brand-new microphone, which James Vega, thank you very much, and Joe Fiss have gone ahead and gotten, which you're gonna use in emergencies, and the Arts Commission is gonna use for its docent tours, so I won't have to shout, you'll all be able to hear me.
Are we giving you a bullhorn?
Yes!
Oh, no!
Yes, you are!
You're gonna be walking downtown back, like the college tours.
I promise you, it will be really a lot of fun, and I think it's so important for all of you to come, because this is your public art. This is your program that your Arts Commission has done for you. Let me just mention Elise DePoyt, who did a wonderful book called Fountains and Sculptures of Ojai, and allowed me to plagiarize from that book freely, she was on the committee. And also Connie Campbell, Jackie Clark, Andy Gilman, Luis Gomez, I know you all know who he is, and he was just a treasure working with me on this. Dale Hanson, who did edits, Sammy Zawringer was on the committee. And, um, last but not least, Jamie Fleming, who has volunteered, when he saw what this was, has volunteered to distribute it all over town for us, 'cause he was so excited about it. So this is, this is a wonderful thing. I love coming and making announcements for the projects we're working on, for the public. I'll just remind you that it's almost time to get in your entries, your proposals for the paint box project, to paint utility boxes. Don't give your commissioner three minutes.
No, you've had about six or seven, but I know it may seem to be faster for you, but...
Anyway, I have to collect these back from you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
They're not, not giving mine back.
Oh, okay, these are, this, okay, yes.
Come to the tour.
These are all numbered here.
Saturday, April 4th, nine o'clock, Club Vista.
Should we be...
Congratulations.
Should we wipe your green or anything?
Yes, here's, uh...
Thank you.
Here, would you?
Very wonderful accomplishment. That's just fabulous.
Okay, thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up on the agenda, we have the Ventura Watershed Adjudication Report. And that's gonna be made, City Manager, City Attorney?
And we have a recusing.
Yes.
I need to recuse myself.
Okay, yeah, get out of here.
Don't go too far, this is probably a short update.
The Commission on Judicial Performance, okay.
So this is the watershed litigation filed by Ventura against the Ojai Valley and all users in the watershed. And the update is that, as requested by the city and some other organizations, the court has granted an extension of time to respond to the cross complaint to September 8th, 2020. Again, for the audience, uh, September 8th, 2020 is now the deadline for anyone who has been named or served in the suit to respond to that, um, at the request of Ojai and a couple of other agencies. So that buys about six months of time for settlement discussions to continue, and for everyone who is evaluating what to do, to have some time to make those decisions. The city continues to be in settlement negotiations and discussions with the other users in the suit, and is evaluating further options to further narrow the case and further protect the residents.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I have one card, Dre, are you still out there?
Yeah.
So first, I wanna thank your commitment to keeping on top of this issue. It's one that's really going to affect our community from a multitude of arenas, including fire resiliency, climate resiliency, and most of all, economic security for our community. So I encourage you to develop as much information as you can about this topic, create as much data as you can, because there's power in data. When you can, grandfather yourself into the system so you don't lose your rights to the use of the resource of your, um, natural organic fire retardant. And, you know, most of all, just utilize all of the amazing resources we have within our community. There are a lot of very knowledgeable geologists, hydrogeologists, water experts within our community. Take them in and have them educate you as much as you can so that you can make the best, best-educated systems with the best and latest data, and have a robust argument to secure these resources for our community. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any questions, the staff from council? If not, okay, we'll move to item number four, Electric Landscape Equipment Program and Incentive Options. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. We'll, we'll let Councilmember Blatz come in.
Ryan, you may return.
Commissioner Reanser.
Quick and dirty.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
So this, this item is on the agenda to get some feedback from council about options for a electric landscaping equipment incentive or licensing program. We've been trying to get the word out, so hopefully people saw some of the ads in the paper, or on the website, or on, um, on our TV channel, but effective April 27th, 2020, a ban on most gas-powered landscaping equipment will go into effect. Items that will be prohibited include lawn mowers, leaf blowers, lawn edgers, string trimmers, hedge trimmers, pole hedge trimmers, and pole saws. And so, um, with that, we've talked recently about, um, different options for incentive-type programs. We did some initial research to, to give some ideas of, of programs that we can proceed with. The three, uh, types of programs that we identified were, uh, option one in the report, which is a loner program, which would be a program where the city actually purchases equipment and loans it out to, uh, residents, um, who don't have electric equipment. Uh, and we've been working with, talking to some different groups within the city, including possibly the library, about how we could work that out if, uh, if we wanted to pursue that. And it would probably, uh, we identified, uh, you know, an expected startup cost to start a program like that of between $35,000 to $40,000. Uh, option two would be a licensing program, which we've talked about recently in council, uh, which is a program where the city would license equipment and identify, provide some sort of identification, like a sticker or, um, decal that you could put on the equipment so that residents can clearly see that the equipment has been approved by the city. So we've, uh, laid out that possible program as well. And then, third is a incentive program. A lot of people say, call these types of programs something like a cash-for-clunkers-type program, where somebody could either come in and trade in equipment and get, you know, a, uh, a, um, a subsidy towards buying equipment, or, um, they can bring in a proof of purchase that they bought electric equipment. Uh, and there's a few different ways we could do that. But essentially, what we're looking for at this time, we, we talked about how a couple of these programs could operate, and we're asking council for feedback and direction on what they'd wanna pursue for, for this.
Bill?
Staff question.
Bill?
My understanding is that the private sector has already started responding to our new ordinance in particular. We do have a rental equipment yard in the valley, and they've already been stocking up rental availability. I don't know the extent of that. Do we have any information as to what extent they're gonna have rental equipment available?
We've heard the same thing, and in fact, um, uh, the, the equipment rental in the valley, Greg Rents is one of the ones everybody knows, right? And he, they, he actually attended our demonstration and noted that they were amping up at that time to be prepared for it, so, so we can reach out to...
I just thought that might be a german question to ask.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions for the staff before? I have one, uh, public comment card here. If not, Steve Colome, Dr. Colome, come on down.
Evening. I, I'd like to, uh, support this, the staff recommendation on this. Ojai's leadership on this issue is being noted, um, more and more widely, as Councilmember Blatz has indicated from the APCD, that our, uh, new director, Dr. Lackey Tizopoulos, um, sees the efforts that we made in Public Works as being one of their most cost-effective measures ever undertaken. And as a result of that leadership, Dr. Tizopoulos indicates that, uh, the cities of Santa Paula, Fillmore, um, Port Huaynimi, and several others are...
Lake Casitas.
Lake, Lake Casitas are looking to, um, receive, uh, you know, similar funding to expand this. At the demolition, uh, event that we had, um, the County of Santa Barbara was represented, and just last week, the, uh, Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District announced a $100,000, uh, program for conversion of, um, into battery-electric e-equipment. I think that, you know, the notion of having a, a loner program can both extend what is presently in the Public Works Department, so, in fact, it can be backup for, for, uh, Public Works. And for all of the concerns of, of equity, it is a useful way, I think, of, um, you know, providing backup in the event to, uh, gas, uh, equipment breaking down for whatever reason, um, and for homeowners to try out, uh, the truly commercial equipment. So I endorse the staff, uh, recommendation and, and look forward to the council's discussion.
Is that option one you're endorsing?
Yeah, yeah.
Not two and three?
Option one, yeah, as, as a preferred option.
Someone else wish to weigh in here?
I have a question now.
Yeah, Susan.
So, there's nothing, I, I also am in favor of option one, but I have some questions about it. My first question is, um, can we not also take elements of option two and three? We can, correct?
Yeah, and, and the, the big challenge, as always, is gonna be funding, right? But we can, we can look at those options and, and figure out ways to kinda do those things, right?
My only, um, the, about the loan, um, that, that, okay, my question's really simple, I'm just trying to find the right words. So both residents and commercial operators can use the loan program, but, um, it just feels like we should tag on some kind of, um, uh, modest administrative fee, perhaps for residential. I don't know, I mean, I just would hate to see the program abused, because it's intended to help, uh, those for whom this is a hardship. It's intended as a transition. It's not intended for someone that has a huge acreage to constantly wear down our equipment for free. So, you know what I'm saying?
This is, this is the useful feedback, uh, that I was, we were hoping to get, 'cause if we picked an option, uh, you know, we wanna hear what the concerns are, 'cause then we could develop some guidelines and procedures that we can put into effect. So we could say, you know, limited to, you know, are, um, limited to once per month, or, you know, we could put limitations on, we can, we could talk about a potential fee, we could talk about, um, uh, making sure that the same person's not using it every time, and that it gets, you know, the usage gets spread out. So we could, we can incorporate all those things into the program.
Yeah, and I would just wanna make sure that it works for the, it's the commercial people that I'm most concerned about. I wanna make sure that this works for them, and that eventually it enables them to buy their own equipment. I think that should be the, the goal.
Yeah, and, and we had one thought that this would be something where they can use, we could buy different types of equipment, and they can use different types and see which one they would want to purchase, so there's some utility to it that way.
Yeah, that's all good.
But, um, but yeah, so I, uh, that's useful as well, we'll note, for commercial users.
Okay, other questions or thoughts? Yeah, I think number one, it does sound like a, a good idea. I'm wondering, uh, in the, when you come back to us, uh, one of the things I assume you, the staff will do was check around and to see who else is, has done this and what kind of problems they've had, and like Suzie's pointing out, you know, there's cash-for-clunkers and all that sort of thing.
Didn't necessarily work all that well.
Yeah, it does have room for abuse. I've even been threatened by some of our citizens, so how they...
About a couple of those clunkers, so.
I still have one, thank you.
I still, I, I didn't get rid of my clunkers.
I have some comments, man.
Yeah, okay.
But Ryan, I think Ryan's...
Okay, well, all right. Uh, well, first of all, thank you, Steve, I appreciate it. Your support of all these types of issues is always, um, very much appreciated. I think, one on the loner program, if we can do something great, but I am concerned that if we just start lending equipment out to everybody, it's gonna come back broken, and we're gonna have to deal with that. And that's the reality. But if we can find a way that it works, and the staff is okay with it, and the outlay's not too out, out of control, that's fine. I can say that as far as the rebate situation, we're looking into that at Air Pollution Control District right now. These other cities, the, Ojai used up all the funding, apparently. So, these other cities are looking for more funding.
Yes, we want more.
And, uh, yeah, and, um, and that's, that's, that's a good thing. It's not that we used it all up, we were just the only ones who were asking for it. So, they're looking at, I, I clarified. So they're, they're looking into that right now, and that may be an option. There may or may not be additional money available for what we're trying to do as a, as an additional project, but my guess would be probably not, just to give you a heads up on that. Um, the, on the rebate side of things, though, I wanna say something, make this very clear, the cash-for-clunkers thing that I just sort of beat up a little bit, which is how I got my car, um, sorry. The, uh, the, um, this county still ha, Air Pollution Control District still has a cash-for-clunkers program, by the way, that we do through the county for old vehicles. It's much more stringent, it's not as broad as the federal program was, but it is still in place, and we just re-upped a couple million dollars into it, and it's been incredibly successful. The average rate of reduction of pollution through that program is about $7. I wanna say it's $7 per pound, versus about a $14 per pound average when you're getting rid of pollution otherwise. So it is a very efficient program that is really good, and anything that eliminates or reduces pollution on mobile devices or mobile transportation-type devices is much more important than stationary devices. So anytime we have a chance to do that, it's really important. That being said, I had a conversation today with Lackey, the director at APCD, about, we were having this, uh, that we were gonna do this tonight, and I said we would at least make sure, whatever we decide, we will get them the feedback, so the other communities that are moving forward with this, they can use the information we have as far as regulating it. And inside of that conversation, I also said, we had discussed a sticker or something so that our enforcement could be easy, so that if the enforcement officers are out, they can easily see from a distance that a device has a clear sticker, 'cause as Randy has said, it's not always easy to tell by the company make or the actual equipment. So we think that's really important. I suggested that maybe it's Air Pollution Control District at the county that creates something as far as a design for a sticker, or something like that, that could get handed out to all the counties. They really like that. I don't wanna overdo the fact we're a small piece of art, but I think it could be something that's really neat. And the other thing that I thought it worked well with, Randy, was you said, the manufacturers sometimes get confusing, so a sticker could actually sit on top of the manufacturer's name to make it absolutely clear from a distance that it was an electric device that was approved by the city, and that would go to the licensing part. I don't think I wanna make it too complicated for people to get involved, but if we wanna put a sticker on their device so we can enforce it, something where somebody checks it, slaps it on, and charges them between $5 and $25, I think is, is sufficient. But I do think it's something that we need them to at least come in once, and if they never have to come in again, that's probably okay, but we would, I would think that that would be part of it. So I see a little bit out of all three of these as being a, um, you know, obviously pending money to do the rebate slash incentive project. If we can get money, that would be easy. But I do think the loner program's good, but I think we oughta have some regulatory licensing thing as well, and make it real simple, and if it dovetails with, again, something that makes enforcement real easily, then, again, we can, you know, you can tell, if you can tell from a hundred yards whether that device is electric or not, it'll go a long way for us being able to better manage what's going on in the streets.
Randy?
So I agree with all these comments. I, uh, I think a way to create some sense of self-sustaining, is I pay $135 a year for a license in the city of Ojai. So I think having a licensing fee, and that council can either earmark that we just put into that funding system, so that each year, the 50 or 60 gardeners that actually visit our community are paying into lessening this greenhouse gas and lessening the carbon footprint that we have in our community. So they're participating, and when they're spending dollars in our community, I think it's a better buy-in. The, the other thing is, most of the gardeners that are here are already, are actually buying this equipment. Um, and I did talk to Eileen Fay at Aquaflo, and her, um, employees are being trained and servicing of the equipment that they sell.
Yep.
And because it's electric, it's not necessarily motors and, and, you know, it's not a big expense item, it's usually a throttle, um, mechanism, it's plastic. So it's actually a pretty simple fix. So she seems to think that they'll be able to bring equipment in, get it fixed on-site, and have it turned around in a day or two days. So I think that's a benefit, too. And again, um, she has opened up the ability for gardeners to go in there and actually, um, take a loan to buy a whole package of equipment at an excellent rate. So, um, so again, the community has bought in. Um, I think the loner aspect of it might be for a residential individual that hasn't that hasn't gone out and bought one and would like to try one. So, therefore, I would be for that. But the commercial entity, I think that we should require them to be fully fledged and fully bought in.
Yeah, I think the loaner should be limited to residential, at most.
And a limited, maybe a limited number of use.
Limited use and some fee for use.
Right, and I'm not stating that, that we need to charge $135 to a gardening service because the income I'm generating is obviously larger than their service. But a fee of 65 to 75 to 85, I think is, is equitable for the type of businesses that they do here.
Okay, Suz.
My, my thought is that it should be available to commercial because those are the very people we don't want this to be a hardship for. It doesn't have to be permanent, but it's such a friendly gesture for someone who's maybe new the business, who, who knows? It doesn't have to be widespread and it's not going to unmotivate people that work for AquaFlow or anything like that. But I don't see why it can't be available.
Commercial uses very intensive use.
Well, what about, is there, what about people that work for themselves?
Still intensive.
Well, but I mean, I thought that.
They're a commercial operator that could be licensed.
Well, I thought that the, to me, this is, I thought our, one of our concerns over the years was that it would be a hardship for the, for the gardeners. I kept hearing that. So, I'm.
Things have evolved a little bit. The prices come down, the equipment is better. Randy's been a pretty good spokesman for the industry as far as the concerns about how it does impact, you know, maybe disproportionately certain people, but that seems to be working itself out. But I, I mean, your point's well taken. I think that James has the sense of what we, we'd like to make it as efficient as possible, keeping the cost down. And so, you'll report back to us when you come up with a program?
Yeah, so we'll develop some programs.
Yeah, and, and for the record, I'd like to say that we didn't use up all the money and we weren't the only one in line. And I want to give a lot of credit to Dr. Colome because when he came to me with this, what, how many, three years ago, whenever we started this, and he said he had this idea and he didn't think that because we were like third in line, that it would be funded. But we went down and as he and I presented it, it really, you know, sparked some interest on the part of the advisory group who then started contacting us. And the next thing you know, we discovered we didn't have to wait an extra funding year. They were, became partners with us. So, it was a great thing that both the city and the APCD did. And it wouldn't have happened without Dr. Colome's persistence at saying, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get, right?
Eric, could I just amplify what you're saying there is, and, and what everyone is saying. The fact that we did this, first got the grant, wonderful job, then we passed the ordinance after proving the concept, it's having a catalytic effect on the market. Randy's exactly right. Everyone you talk to, electric sales are way up. Other cities are looking at it. We're establishing an industry because we did the right thing at the right time here. And I, I just think, you know, every once in a while, we kind of get it right and, and, and we, this, this was the right time, the right place. The costs have come down, the, the technology is maturing. And frankly, the next time you take your, I'm going to talk to everybody here. Next time you take your engine-driven equipment out of that garage shed and sit there cussing why it won't start, just throw it away and get electric.
Yeah.
May I have a question?
Yes.
Okay, couldn't we, at least, when, when the enforcement takes place, have a three month period or some reasonable amount of time where a commercial for whom it's really a hardship can make that transition? I mean, I'm still going, I'm not done promoting.
I think we've already had that in the program.
Already had a transition.
Yeah, so.
No, but I mean, because, and the other thing, I thought Randy was concerned that when the equipment breaks down, that they would be able to go back and use their gas power. That's no longer an issue. Is that correct?
It could be an issue, but between what Randy just said about AquaFlow.
Uh-huh.
And all these other.
But that's why I'm thinking, but if the loan program, the loan, the loan program could also be for people whose equipment breaks down?
That's what the idea was.
Or they could go rent, a replacement.
Okay, okay. They have a great brand.
That's a good point, Suz. I mean, let's, let's, if I, if I may just add to it, if, if we're, if we're looking at a loaner program, that's only, that's not commercial, only for residential, because I think there's kind of a consensus there. I think it would be a good idea that if there's a commercial user who has, can show it, it broke down, then they'd be eligible for the loaner program. I think that would be a good.
Yeah, why, why be so hard-nosed about it?
Well, we just, the commercial use, we don't want them to beat our.
We haven't even got the program presented yet. We understand you want to be sensitive.
At least for the first few months, we're going to look at what works, okay?
Right.
I love your evolution.
Yeah. Okay, so good. Thank you, James, for getting back to us on that. And let's keep pushing that rock up the hill, okay? We are now on item, on what, number five? Is that right? Introduction and Ordinance, Mending the Ojai Municipal Code on Organic Food Waste. This is the new thing that's kicking in this month from the state of California?
Not yet. It's, it doesn't take effect, if, allow me to give a brief report. The item has been adopted in 16. The state isn't releasing its regs until the end of next month, end of April, and it doesn't take effect until January 1st, 2022. So, there's some time. We are ahead of the game, which is why the ordinance before you isn't as formed as it might be. But we recognize one of the council's goals is to get ahead of the game. So, we wanted to bring this before you to start the conversation and get some further direction on where you'd like us to go for the next draft, which we will bring back to you after a minimum two inputs. One is the state's going to release its model ordinance in April, and unless they get delayed again. And two, we need to have some conversations with EJ Harrison, our franchise trash hauler, to understand what, what they can and can't do and what their vision is for how to comply with the new state regs. The key questions, we're looking for some input from the council tonight are, one, what are your thoughts in terms of the basic SB 183 program, which is about reducing the organic waste that flows into the landfill and diverting it to other, other treatment methods? Do you want to do it the state minimum or do you want to go beyond? And if, if the answer is, I expect us to go beyond, then that's where the conversations have to start with Harrison. What is within their realm of possibility? What's within the, something beyond possibility? What can we do better? And what does that look like? And second, the second question would be on unsold food, the unsold food recovery program, which is an idea that's out of France and out of Austin, Texas, another example in the US we found. Do we want to do, again, the state minimum, which is come up with a plan, it's a bit vague at this point, or do we want to do something beyond? And if something beyond, then the, we would ask that you give us direction to start conversations with, again, EJ Harrison and with the major food waste generators in the city, the rest, larger restaurants and the grocery stores to get a sense of what's within their realm of possibility and beyond mere possibility, what could we structure that would be viable? That's the brief introduction.
Ryan?
Um, I, I'll, I'll give this suggestion and see if there's any support. What I would say is we probably would like a, you know, what, what the minimum is, obviously, and then a more aggressive and then a more aggressive approach. But I do think on something like this, it's important to be consistent with what the county does. Cause it seems to me that with our sometimes nebulous border that everyone feels in Ojai or the city and the county start, that it wouldn't make sense that Bacolies is under a different rule than a, than a restaurant inside the town and then one in Oakview. So, I think it would be good. Now, I don't know what the timeline or what the county has reviewed on this yet, but I would like to know that if we can before we implement anything.
We can talk to the county. I'm not sure where they are. We can certainly have the conversations.
Have you, may I suggest that you contact the city of Santa Monica, who is also looking at this very issue in real time as we speak, looking at ordinance modifications and report back to us and maybe interact with them possibly on what they're doing as well?
Sure, I have a very good colleague in their city attorney's office there. I'll give him a call.
They, they are doing this too. And in response to Ryan, you know, I, I understand your point, but on the other hand, I wouldn't help push it, I wouldn't mind pushing the envelope a little better, maybe to pull the county behind us a bit.
Well, I'm, I'm not assuming the county's only going with the state minimum. So, yeah, I mean, if they go to something and we're just a little different, I'd rather be consistent.
And also, and isn't it Bakersfield and Kern County that have been doing this for some time?
Yeah.
So, to check with them. Suz?
Okay, I, I heard what you said, Ryan, but we have different standards anyway between the city and unincorporated area. And I see this as a golden opportunity to really make ours a, a model because we're so small. There are things that we can do that are far more difficult for other cities that might need five years to implement. And I suggest that we bring in some of, like a zoo gives waste to the pigs already. And there are people that, that we really need to consult with. Jeff Otterbein has a Sunday morning compost pickup service. And he comes on a bicycle and, and he just, you know, I have, for people who are living in apartments or someone like me, I have a very small front yard. And so, I put my compost bucket in front of my gate and it's magically empty by noon. Because, you know, he's, he.
I hope it's Jeff.
It's Jeff Otterbein.
Thank you for lunch, by the way.
Yeah.
I have a compost.
Yeah, so we can bring in somebody from food for thought, like this, what the schools are doing, what some of the restaurants are already doing, and make this really wonderful. There, you know, and, and maybe, so my next question is, the issue with France, it says, like a law, like the one passed in France, that mandates donation of unsold food, unsold food could potentially fall afoul of the takings cloud. What, what's that about?
So, the issue there is that the Fifth Amendment to the US Constitution and its equivalent in California, in our constitution prohibit the taking of private property without just compensation. The French do not have said rule. The, if it, a reviewing court held that unsold but still edible food constituted valuable private property, we couldn't simply take it and direct it to be donated. However, if we structured a program that'll, that didn't take the food and instead required that food not be disposed of as solid waste and instead be disposed of through one of several options that the owner of the food could choose, none of which were diversion to the landfill, that would probably survive a takings challenge and would still accomplish overall goals, which could include donating edible food to.
Help of Ojai.
You know, food providers.
Yeah.
Edible but not human consumption food like scraps would be appropriate for animal feed, for pigs and other animals, as is often done in the ag industry now. Some of it could go to in aerobic digesters and other organic waste recycling options. Our thinking is that if we structure it as a bit of a regulatory requirement with some options to comply rather than a single mandate, it probably survives takings review. And that's one of the, the questions we have for the council, is do you want us to look at that op, those options further and further analyze that question?
I'm a yes on that.
Yes.
I have, I have, just a thought on this. You know, of all the opportunities that, or all the times that we look for creating committees to solve problems, this is one that says there are smarter people out there than us that know more about this type.
That's why I want to talk to Santa Monica.
So, so, outside the city, Suz is right, we actually have users that are probably more up to date on some of these issues in restaurateurs that are tours, that are here in town. I think EJ Harris, because they came and spoke on it, is already ahead of the curve on it. So, they'd be a good entity to bring into this discussion. But I think there's a mobilization of all the people within our community and as many outside resources that we can pull in to help craft what, what we're all calling is Ojai's unique methodologies to this problem, I think is what's called out for. So, that's what.
I agree.
That's how I would look at it.
Agreed. I, I think the direction I'm hearing is to go forth and prosper, conquer on all these items.
Multiply, yeah.
And work with everyone that's been listed here. We've made some notes. And I think we'll sort out on, on our, on the staff side, who the right team is to then bring in these other conversations.
And we want to judiciously go beyond the minimum.
Okay, and, and Matt, do we have, what are the timeline or the deadlines that we are supposed to meet to comply with the state law?
The state deadlines are for us to have something in place before January 1st, 2022.
Oh, okay, so we have.
We've got some time. Not that we have to wait that long.
Oh, we're going faster than that.
You can go faster than that.
Mayor, also, we had, we, we also had something else. You know, you know, the, there's a review of the use of the Ojai Valley Organic Processing Center. And right now, they've kind of allowed one individual to start looking at it and rewriting an application for a CUP on that site. One of the things that that individual does not want to do is composting.
Mm-hmm.
Where we do have another entity that's, that's.
That wants to do composting.
That wants to do composting. So, as part of our conversation, we might, we might enter something into the county and let them know that our preference would be for someone to use that site that has composting abilities.
Which is why.
And a skill set.
Which is why I wanted to look into.
Yes.
If we possibly are controlling the site to do what we want to do with it.
That's the thought too, Bill. I agree.
Well, past experience tells me that no matter what we do, when we put it on the agenda, somebody will say, why didn't you tell me about it? And so, you know, people with a vested interest in the subject. So, it seems to me the sooner we put something together and put it on the agenda to get everyone's attention, then we can improve on it. If we try to, you know, lead the charge and make it, you know, you know, too avant-garde, we might not get to it in time. So, doing something, I think, at this point is better than what's going on right now. And I don't think it's that expensive to amend later as we get more experience. I think like, as Randy and Suz are saying, we have a lot of people in this valley that have already been working on this for years that could help out. So, if we get the basic thing down on paper and put it on an agenda, I think you'll suddenly see people in the, in the audiences we usually see to tell us where we're right and where we're wrong. So, okay?
Mayor, one more, just want to make sure you'll talk to help of Ojai because I know people that go there for their breakfast, you know, they get the, they, and they love it. It's a really evidently very good quality food that, that the Rainbow Bridge gives them and other, other stores. Yeah.
Okay.
I thought my model the next time we're run is vote for me, I compost for free.
That's good. It's a good model.
Are you volunteering your body?
Here we go.
Okay, now, it says here, introduction of an ordinance.
At, at this time, I would recommend that you can introduce the ordinance as drafted if you want, or we can continue to refine it and then bring it back.
Okay, why don't you do one more refinement, put it back on the agenda, say within a month or so, and then let's get, start moving it.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, number six, review of city housing's element annual progress report.
And we'll, we'll have just a brief report on this. Is, in short, this is the required annual progress report required by California Government Code Section 65400. It's required to be filed annually each year and talks about the status and progress in implementing our housing element. We, the report's fairly brief and as you'll see, we, it notes that we have 17 new housing, residential units this year, 16 of those being accessory dwelling units and one single family unit. It's, that's pretty much all there is to it, but I did want to note, there's one error, which is, they're currently listed in the disapproved column. They should be in the approved column. So, we'll flip them over into the approved column on the attachment, but.
Which attachment are we looking at?
We're looking at attachment A. If you notice right now, the 17 are in the disapproved. It should be in the approved column. We just, we just copied and pasted.
Yes, wrong, we have the wrong column.
Yeah, another wrong column.
Every one of them in column eight is supposed to be column seven.
Exactly, exactly.
So, disapproved, what, what column is it?
So, column eight, the numbers in column eight should be in column seven.
Should be in seven.
So, we'll correct that. But this is, it's actually, you know, it's, it's just the annual report and it, and it actually surprised me this year that we had 18, or 17 units. So, that was actually a positive report. So.
Bill?
Just a question. I believe this is the most, the highest number we've had since I took office in this council, and I'm in my second term.
I was thinking that too, yeah.
And is our compliance program expired or still in force?
It's still in force. It's still in force.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for having this report on time. A couple of years ago, it came before us and we hadn't turned one in. And I don't know, we were delinquent by how many years.
Three or four.
You know, and if you, if you can't, if you can't keep up with the goals, at least you can get your reports in on time. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Very positive. It's just a receive and file.
Okay, receive and file. Council members.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We need authorization to submit it.
Oh, okay.
So move.
Moved seconded? Okay, moved and seconded. The objection, if not, so ordered.
I just want to add to everybody that they're, these, these are the most updated allocations for currently, is that right, James?
Mm-hmm.
That I just, they, they're, APC, a bunch of different places I've been, they were talking about how they've, the reworking of the reigning numbers was mostly about rather than stretching urban areas, trying to reallocate toward job centers and transportation, which you've already heard. That is not a done deal yet. Most of the new housing is going towards Orange County and South Bay in Los Angeles. And what it's really done is say, all the places that have the most people, you have to take the most more. But there's an appeal process, yeah, there's an appeal process up until, I think it's September, October. So, I just want everybody to know that that's still in flux a little bit. But the new numbers are, are beneficial for most of Ventura County.
And the city of Cerritos has also threatened to file a lawsuit against SCAG's allocation method. We'll see if they do or don't, but that's also in the mix.
Who's threatened to do that?
City of Cerritos.
Oh.
Which is in the south area.
Oh, I know it well. I used to work there.
Um, yeah, the auto center.
The auto square community.
Cerritos?
Yeah, it was known as Dairy Valley in the old days, literally. Okay. Suz, you're up if you have a council report. And if you don't, you don't have to have one, that's okay.
No, I, I just want to call your attention. I, I. I had Louise distribute a flyer. It's for a workshop called Exploring Ecological Strategies for Growing Healthy Trees. And you can read the flyer, and if you can reach out to any ranchers that are friends, it's going to be excellent, because the-
Is the citrus growing?
Yeah, the coordinator is Ron Whitehurst. He's a pest control advisor, and it's just, he's, I've been to his workshops, he's great.
Beneficial bugs?
Yeah, yeah. And I know Randy always teases us about the letter, but I want to assure you that Patty Pagelin and Renee Roth, they're working with Hannah Beth Jackson, Adam Vega's going to Sacramento. There's so many things that have happened, and they have been in contact with, with, you know, different officials, and they're going, we're going to come back with, and Bill and I will examine, they gave me a draft, but it's just a draft of a draft, because things are changing. I believe that Steve from Farmer and the Cook went to Sacramento. Our people are instrumental in making changes at the state level, I think it's safe to say.
I'll be honest with you, Suze, I don't even remember what the letter was about.
That's okay, let's, we don't need to-
I mean, what, yeah, sure, it's been that long.
Yeah, well, anyway, but it's, it was pesticide notification.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, Randy.
But I'm not done. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not done.
I'm going to have to give you a limit on when you are done, what's going on.
But is this, I just want to be clear, is this the time when we can discuss? At some point, I want to discuss this issue of meetings, the public meetings versus meetings that are not for the public, but there's an issue if more than two council members attend. And I just want to say that I, I mean, I can under-
This is maybe an agenda item, this is not a report to the council, we're on reports to the council.
Okay, but I do want to say that I was, you know, I brought up the SCAG meeting because it was related to the ATP issues we were discussing. But I just want to clarify that, I mean, I don't like to be made to feel that I did something behind anyone's back-
You didn't.
Or that someone wasn't invited. The entire time I was at the meeting, I was just wishing that you were all there, and they assured me that the entire presentation that they made is going to be the public, and this was a meeting for people who had background. It was-
That is fine. You didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we're passing and I'm passing, what do you have, Ryan?
I, as I said earlier, Air Pollution Control District today, shortest meeting I've been to there, which was a little different, but we're currently in the process of procuring grant money for the year, and we'll be reporting back on that. And like I said, I've talked to them directly about our regulation scheme that we'll be putting together and how APCD might be a part of that as far as non-gas powered equipment. And then the other one I wanted to say, and I think Councilmember Wyrick may have spoke this individually, but I talked to Rami over at Joe's Quick Stop, and I have been instructed to inform our council and the public that the alien must stay. He's willing to do whatever it takes to get that phone alien to stay. It is a hilarious story how this all went down.
And it is deeply appreciated by the entire Joe's Quick Stop community.
He is not kidding, that he said he is out there taking pictures, people are coming by taking pictures.
It is a tourist attraction.
He said if it takes a couple bucks to make sure it keeps coming forward, it's been great for business, he loves it, it's very Ojai, so I, I wanted to bring that back to everybody.
Selfies are going viral, so.
And I'm sure that that's okay for now, but when the yarn gets old, fortunately, we haven't had too much rain, I guess, if you're at the Quick Stop.
But, yeah, it's quite the phenomenon. I don't know if you've been watching social media at all, but yes.
And on the eve, I think that it's-
So we're officially protected for the time being. We're officially protected for the time being.
Johnny Carson were still on TV, he might have, he might feature that for us. Okay, Bill, what do you have?
I have a future agenda item, but I do not have-
It was an alien at a liquor store.
Okay, city manager's report?
So we had already reported one element, because it was on the agenda, but we just want to keep the word out that the gas landscaping equipment prohibition goes into effect on April 27th, 2020, so we'll keep saying that every meeting, just so everybody's aware as we get closer. The other, just a couple of items that are, we are planning to bring back on March 24th. One is the tree resolution, the tree ordinance slash resolution that's coming back for discussion. I'm also planning to bring back a recommendation regarding the Sterling contract extension, which we haven't talked much about recently. Another annual general plan related report that's, that we're due to return with annually, and then a budget forecast, which will be interesting as we're seeing with current events, it's, there's a little bit of unpredictability, but we're going to bring the initial round of forecasting.
Question for the city manager?
Do we have a, at least a rough schedule for advertising for applications for the interim positions, the consequence of the resolution we passed regarding commission positions that became interim?
Yes.
And advertising for applications, so we could at least get that process going?
Yeah, and the, so the rough schedule is last week, we were trying to notify everybody, and then we had the, we personally notified everybody that was affected. This week, we're sending out the letters, and we'll also send out the advertisements at the same time.
And we'll put the advertisement in the Ohio Valley News, just like, okay.
Yep.
And the website?
Okay, we're now on future agenda items. Suze, you're, now you are raising the question of how best can we address this issue of when meetings are to be, everybody's to be invited, or how they're to be posted versus Brown Act?
Yeah, because some meetings, like if you had a water meeting that required that people have a background, so I wouldn't come for the first time and ask questions that you've discussed for years, I wouldn't want to be the third person and prevent you from having that meeting because of the Brown Act. Do you get my drift?
Yeah.
Okay, because we each have our areas that we're passionate about and more interested in, and that, you know, and I have attended, I've never missed a complete street meeting, I've been to workshops, so I felt like it was appropriate that I attended that meeting, not as a technical advisor, but as someone that wouldn't ask fundamental questions that had already been discussed over the years, so. But it seems like we need to have something, so, because what if two other council members had wanted to attend, then what would have, how could you have handled it?
Okay, well, the city manager, I think, is working on this and has been sensitized to it, like things, like meeting with the school district. There are times when staff should meet, there are times when staff and committees would meet, there are times when it's open to the public. If it's open to the public, then certainly the council would want to know about that. I think that one of the things that, at least the sense I'm getting, is this whole, the ATP program has dragged on for how many years now, but a lot of good work has been done, but not everybody's of the same opinion, and so there's a sensitivity to that, that maybe decisions are getting made before they actually get made by the city council, and then that puts those people who are concerned about those items kind of behind the power curve as far as getting their input. So I don't think we want to rewrite all our rules for that.
Yeah, but it was not a decision-making meeting, it was information, and they wanted to know what the concerns were of the people that were opposed to it.
Right, okay, well, I think that-
And they would welcome a phone call from anyone, they want to have everything, their minutes, the minute, they have minutes.
Right.
And they want the minutes distributed, you know, so.
So I guess what my suggestion is, is rather than putting this on the agenda and ending up with a lengthy discussion that the city manager put, he understands that there are hot topics and that those hot topics do require that we all be aware of it. And I think like the issue of the, what did you call it, Bill, the optimal solution on the-
Optimal design.
The optimal design, that was best handled by staff, even though all of us had an interest in that particular element.
I did not want to be at that meeting.
Right, right. So what I'm saying is, is that the city manager then would let us know when these things are coming up, and then if we, more than two of us want to attend, then it becomes a Brown Act issue, and the city attorney advises as to how we go about notifying it.
So I have struggled for a long time on how to address this, so I'm not sure where to do it, but I'll just say it quickly. Suze, when you were a citizen of the community and participated in Complete Streets, I personally had no problem with that. But now that you're a city council member and you are still, you are still a part of that Complete Streets Committee, I struggle with that, because what you're doing is you're lending council credibility to the discussions that take place inside that room, and to me, it limits your ability to come here with an impartial understanding of situations and provide impartiality and to listen to the rest of the council debate. So my concern about any of these committees is, when a council member appoints themselves to one and becomes a direct liaison to one, how do we, how does that happen without council approval? Generally, when a council person sits on a committee, it's due to a process that we have voted them to represent council on an ad hoc committee. Now we have someone that is actually sitting on one that hasn't been appointed from the body of the council, and I just struggle with that.
Okay, so it sounds like a protocol issue that we should address, and so you obviously have an interest in it. Is there anyone else who'd like to be on a subcommittee to address that in our protocols? Then it'd be clear for everybody.
Well, I have a quick question, maybe, but if you go on, if you're on any other type of organization, and it hasn't been approved as a committee from this board, then you're just there as a citizen. And you can say anything you want as a council member, but you should be very careful, because you're not a council member in that meeting. I mean, I'm the president of Ojai Flow, I don't go in there and try and talk like this is how it's going to work at the city.
So this is why this can expand, for instance.
Yeah, but we can't debate it, we're starting to get-
But I'm just going to say real quickly-
I just didn't know if that took care of the problem.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, when a council person is attending a meeting and they're directing staff to come to a meeting, that's not being a citizen, because a citizen cannot direct staff, much less a council member.
I didn't know that happened.
But that's what I'm trying to say, is those are the issues that need to be clarified.
Right, okay. And I think that we can do that through a protocol.
As an agenda item, rather.
Right, yeah, put it on the agenda, then we can discuss it and massage it.
But I want to, I want to correct Randy's statement. We had questions that only Greg Grant could answer.
You do not need to correct Randy's statement.
Yeah, we weren't directing Greg Grant, we were, you know, we had a discussion.
It seems clear that the council needs to discuss this item on the agenda, and I think that agenda should include both a discussion of the protocols element of it and likely a discussion of the status of the Complete Streets Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, which is its formal status, albeit it has morphed beyond the formal status.
Right, and we have maybe two or three of those items that over the years kind of bounce in and out that maybe we could address at the same time.
That's one of the reasons I asked for a status of all of these committees. I don't even think, we even know how many committees we have. I never heard of the committee that Suze was talking about, have you guys?
The Complete Streets Committee?
No, the Subcommittee of the Subcommittee of the Complete Streets-
Yeah, okay, we'll never have a complete inventory, but as they raise up, it's sort of whack a mole.
We should have.
We'll try to deal with it.
I think we can put together an item that at least inventories is that what we're aware of.
Okay, but I didn't, I'm still, I'm still on future agenda items.
Let's get to it then, what do you have for a future agenda item?
I want to ask James, if you and I could meet, could we look at the resolution that other cities are adopting to support the mountain lion protection?
I recall that there was two council members that requested that last meeting, so we had scheduled that for the March 24th, so we could meet about that.
Okay, I just didn't hear you say it.
Oh, yeah, because it's on consent.
It's on, it's on consent. Okay, thank you, I didn't hear it, okay.
Okay, all good?
Yeah, all good, yeah.
I think she just pulled it from consent.
Yeah, we could do that.
We, I, we want to bring back this issue about the climate park and talk about it next week, so I think-
Yeah, and I support that.
Okay.
It's a time sensitive issue to discuss.
There's a proposal of some sort, is that what?
Yeah, and it's-
With a possible international partner on climate change part.
And we, Bill and I, I, Bill and I were called, like, in a very short window to try and meet with some people that Jamie Fleming had put together that happened to randomly be available in town, and that's why this is moving quickly. And we haven't had, because of the Brown Act, we haven't had an opportunity to be able to talk to anybody else about it. But I, I'm hopeful that we can bring it back for a full discussion next week and talk